I'm Mark Locock, I'm the Chair of the Independent Inquiry into the Street Tree dispute in Sheffield. Thanks for joining us again. Could you please tell us your name and your role?
Hi, morning. My name's Paul Brook. From mid 2018 to mid 2020, I was co-chair of Sheffield Tree Action Groups. Prior to that, I'd self-employed for the last few years, but prior to that, I had 30 years of experience working in local government in adult social care.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for coming this morning. So, I just need to make sure you understand a couple of things about what we're doing here today. Firstly, we are live-streaming this and we're recording it, and we will publish the recording probably later in the day, or you know we're doing that. Secondly, we need to be careful that we don't inadvertently have anything said here which is libelous or defamatory, or that we don't inadvertently bring into the public domain personal information, private information about individuals which should really be protected under data protection legislation. I'm not expecting to run into that problem, but I just want to let you know that were I to become concerned about that, I would flag to you I'm being concerned. And in extreme circumstances, if the concerns weren't addressed, then we would have to curtail the hearing. I just want to make sure you're...
Yes.
You understand that, that's great. So, thanks so much. I have sent you a list of topics I'm hoping to hear from you on, and in a minute, we'll work our way through those topics. But is there anything you would like to say by way of introductory remarks?
Yes, thank you. But I've been listening to some of the other evidence that's been given to the inquiry, and something that I was thinking about was that language, the words that are used in any context are always very, very important, and people's perception of what is meant. So, with regard to the campaign, we've heard words such as protesters, activists, people who took direct action. The reality is that everyone was a campaigner, and everyone was a campaigner in one form or another, and people did that in very different ways, from people doing massive amounts of research, using their professional expertise, but also then people who were then prepared to take direct action and do that. So, it's easy to get wrapped up in different words, so I'm going to try and refer to the word as 'campaigner', rather than the others. And it got me to thinking about how important social media was within the campaign, our use of social media, our ability to be able to get messages out there and also communicate with each other. And because I've been thinking about that, I was listening to the evidence that Dr. Alan Billings gave, and in that evidence, he sort of makes a bit of a dismissive comment about whether there'd been a police dog unit on Rustlings Road. And what he said was, "I think that is a good example, especially with social media, where a piece of misinformation goes around and people get the wrong end of the stick." So, I listened to the recordings from Dr. Billings and Mr. Lockley, the Chair of the Advisory Panel on Policing Protest, I think it's called, which you could say, you know, between the two of them, they're kind of a police watchdog role or advisory role. One thing struck me about their evidence, they both made reference to an event on Kenwood Park Road indicating that a protester was an outsider. And it struck me because they both mentioned it, so it obviously struck with them. Dr. Alan Billings stated, "When I visited, we saw somebody who was identified as coming from out of town, a masked protester, possibly from out of the country." Mr. Lockley stated, "A protester not thought to be local got under a cherry picker." So, the first thing that struck me was the person was masked, so how did they know the identity, let alone whether they were local or not? The other thing that struck me is, "I know who it was. He'd been at protests before, and both masked and unmasked. He works in Sheffield, works for the NHS, and lived less than half a mile away from the tree that he got under the cherry picker." So, a point I wanted to make is that it doesn't take social media to spread misinformation that might lead people to get the wrong end of the stick. Dr. Billings and Mr. Lockley were presumably told that information, or misinformation, by the police. And given that the police had detained that person at the time, I'm very unclear how they can have been given that misinformation. Dr. Billings also stated that he'd been informed by ACC Hartley in early 2018 that groups made up of people from outside Sheffield, including people police believed to be known activists, were regularly now appearing. Councilor Dagnall, in his evidence, made a similar statement in reference to Mearsbrook Park Road, Jan. 2018. And he said in his evidence to you that, "We were told in the council that some of the people taking direct action were itinerant direct action people who were bussed up from fracking sites and stuff like that." Again, that's totally untrue. I knew a couple of campaigners who'd been up to visit the protests at Preston Road fracking site, and I did meet one person who was probably known to the police as a hunt saboteur from other protests, but she lived up the road from us, and she was defending the trees that were in her community. So, again, it doesn't take social media to spread misinformation. But it took someone, and that someone's probably a public servant, either in the police or in the council, painting a picture that suited their particular needs. That's what I wanted to say by the way of...
Okay, thank you very much. I understand the point you've made. I understand. Thank you. So, and we're going to work through my list of topics now with your agreement. Could you tell us how you first became aware of the removal, replacement of street trees and what your concerns were?
So, I think it was around, quite late actually, in the process, and, you know, heard from others who'd been part of Sheffield Tree Action Groups much longer than I had. But I think we became aware of it around about Christmas 2016, so I don't recall the Rustlings Road incident at the time. But a neighbour of ours contacted everybody on the street, just pointing out, you know, what had been happening, providing us with some information. Arranged a kind of little meeting of the local Save Gleedless Valley Trees, which was the local group that had already been set up, and had been running for a good while by then. Joined that local group, kind of went along to that. Sheffield Tree Action Groups had set up Save Sheffield Trees, a website where there was a wealth of information, so it included all of the kind of history lead-up that you've heard some about from 2015, 16, in terms of things like the tree forums, things that had been in the press. And so, I had access to quite a lot of information, both that had been provided by the council, but also that had been provided by people opposed and campaigning. I lived, I don't live there anymore, but I used to live on Mearsbrook Park Road. And a few of us went out and realised that 24 out of the 47 trees, it's a tree-lined avenue, 24 out of the 47 were listed to be felled. So, you go and you have a wander, and you go, "Okay, well, I've got this information. I can see what they've said is wrong with the tree. We'll go and have a walk around." So, a group of us started to walk around and have a look at the trees, see if we could get an idea. I just wanted to know what I could see. Within 10 minutes, you're looking at it going, "This doesn't make sense." Outside, there's a tree actually right outside our house. It bent the curb slightly, caught the wheels of the car on it a few times, and one again by our neighbour with a dead straight curb. Our neighbour's tree was scheduled for felling, and the one outside ours wasn't. I don't know, that doesn't make sense. Maybe they're going to schedule my one later, you know, but it wasn't listed for felling. So, the first thing that struck me is, on our road, it was half the trees, give or take one, can't divide 47. It's basically half the trees. In the information that the council had put in, I think, an engineering or highway magazine, it was stating its plan was to replace half the trees. So, I thought, "Okay, you know, perhaps that's what it's about." So, I joined the local group and got involved with Stag. And what impressed me was that the key message that Stag was saying is that "We're campaigning to prevent the unnecessary felling of thousands of mature and healthy street trees in Sheffield." And for me, that was quite significant, because it wasn't a group that was saying, "No one can cut down a tree." And in fact, throughout the campaign, I don't think I ever met anyone through discussion that just maintained you couldn't ever cut down a tree. So, went to a, I guess, I think probably around January time, watching the Facebook, I said, "Oh," you know, spotted a post, "They're coming to feld this tree." So, being self-employed and with a van, I thought, "I'll pop and have a look, see what's going on." Arrived there, and there's half a dozen campaigners there, no police, everything was very polite, chatting away with the arbs that were there to feld the tree. There was a dis- "Are you going to move away?" Well, no, we're not going to move away. And one of the campaigners pointed out that two trees down from where they were was one that they had listed as being diseased. Campaigners said, "Well, what? Instead of cutting this healthy one down, why, you know, we'll leave you alone if you go and cut the diseased one down." And that was exactly what happened. And I thought, "That makes a lot of sense, you know. This is worth doing, you know. Maybe they'll come back for that tree." They did, in fact, come back for that tree within a week and felled it. But what impressed me was that it was polite, it was courteous, there was trying to reason things through. The police weren't called on that occasion. I think I went to a couple more. But that was really the start of it for me, that kind of end of 2016, beginning of 2017, where I was just left, having looked at what I could read and the information available from the council and the campaign, going, "This doesn't make sense."
Thank you. Now, my next topic I wanted to ask you about predates all of that, and I know it was before you were involved, but I, you know, I'm guessing that you would have, because of your involvement, formed some views on this topic. And it's just to ask, from what you know now, why you think the dispute arose? In other words, why the council adopted the kind of approach it did, and which attracted the opposition it did?
Yeah. Well, I can't claim to have an answer to that. I wish I did. From my perspective, I think, looking back, I think the council genuinely thought that replacing half the trees, using smaller, lower maintenance varieties, it's about the species selection, would save money and reduce future maintenance costs. And that by, through the highways work, through being able to access capital investment, that would allow a way of managing the tree stock. But managing the tree stock with the purpose of being able to reduce cost in future, I have no issue with that. You know, the state of local government finances back then and now is dire. The problem was that it made no environmental or ecological sense to do that, to replace half those trees in one go. And you've heard from experts, and Sheffield Tree Action Group contacted and got testimony from a variety of experts that was basically saying that, that, "Yes, you might want to save maintenance, but that way of going about it, what you're planning on doing, makes no environmental sense." I think the council, whether accidentally or deliberately, I've no idea, misquoted or misread the Elliot survey. Now, that was a survey that I'm sure you'll have access to, I think back to 2013, maybe something...
It was earlier than that.
They used that survey to justify removing mature, healthy trees. So, on the basis that, let's say, a lime tree is 80, 90, 100 years old, we'll say that that's past its useful life, and we'll say that's an old tree, that's too old, and we want a younger tree. I think you've had information that counteracts that, and we had expert evidence that said that. That's just completely misunderstanding. If you were harvesting lime wood in a forest, you'd go 100 years, yep, that's, you've got your maximum benefits in terms of usable timber, but not maximum benefits in terms of ecological benefits. But I think they used that to justify removing highways trees, the fewer big trees, the fewer the maintenance issues that there would be on the network. But particularly, changing the species and the age profile really is a shorthand for getting smaller and easier to manage trees. Now, the council must have known that Amy would, when they came into the contract, would front-load the felling of big trees. If you've said you're going to feld half the trees, it makes no sense to maintain a big tree, perhaps a lapsed pollard, a difficult-to-maintain tree. Makes no sense to maintain it for 20 years and feld it in the 20th year of the contract, when you can feld it in the first year of the contract. So, purely from an economic point of view, they must have... And the reason that the council knew that is because that's exactly what it said in the first two iterations of the five-year tree management strategy, which we'll come on to. What it said in those was that reducing costs for future maintenance was central to the five-year tree management strategy. What's surprising is, the council, rather than continue to state that we need younger small trees and change the species and varieties to reduce the cost, they started to move their statements and their description of it, was that all fellings were required as a result of their highway obligations. And that started to become the council narrative, but that was never the whole original intention. The only explanation I can think of why they weren't explicit about what the original plan was, that it was about both highway maintenance and tree maintenance, was that they were faced with a judicial review in January 16 or early 16.
Yes.
Now, one of the grounds for the judicial review is environmental impacts, is this makes no ecological sense, this is, you know, we're questioning your decision. And so, the council's narrative became entirely about highways obligations. Anything about tree maintenance, anything that was in their original five-year tree management strategy about reducing future maintenance costs, reducing, changing the age profile, the species selection, was all lost, and it became entirely about highways obligations. Justice Gilbart made it clear in his judgements that, for example, they didn't need to do an environmental impact assessment if it was highway maintenance. Well, that's significant. The other factor was that, as far as we understand, we now know that to replace that volume of trees for arboretal reasons, for tree maintenance, tree stock, tree management, you'd need a licence from the Forestry Commission. And as I understand it, the council had basically already told the Forestry Commission they could do one. I recall seeing the email of it. It was pretty short shrift, "No, we don't need one, it's highways works, go away." And that was the attitude the council took with the Forestry Commission. So, I think it was, they wanted to save money. Who doesn't? I think they got themselves into a hole with the narrative. And once they'd started that narrative, they were stuck with it.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned just now the five-year tree strategy. There was a published five-year tree strategy document by which I understand you had some concerns, and I wanted to ask you about the discussions campaigners had with the council about the content of that.
Yeah. So, if it's okay, I'll take you through a little bit about the concerns that I've got.
Please do.
Talk to you about that. So, Amy are required by a clause in the contract to write a five-year tree management strategy, and they have to update that annually, and they have to have an annual tree management plan. Those documents are available. But they weren't available to us during the dispute, that's only came out subsequently. What's critical about the documents is they set out the criteria and factors, is the words used, when the council or Amy identify which trees to feld. Now, just prior to January 16, before the judicial review, the council did release a document that was labelled version seven, and I'm assuming you've got access to all of the prior versions, and you're aware of that. They referred to that document in court as being the contractually required strategy, but they've subsequently stated that it was supposedly a kind of more accessible, easy-read document rather than that. Justice Gilbart, and later Justice Miles, placed great weight on the following parts of the five-year tree management strategy. In it, there were 14 supposedly free engineering solutions, or engineering and alternate tree-based solutions, the 14 free engineering solutions, and the six Ds criteria, the dead, diseased, dying, dangerous, damaging, and discriminatory, that would be used under the contract to determine if a tree should be considered for removal. In it is also a description of the decision-making process whereby the council independently review and carry out an independent assessment of any tree Amy proposes to feld. So, that was what was keying that document. However, none of those things are true. It isn't a contract document. It can't be a contract document and an easy-read version. They told the court it was a contract document, and they told the public it was an easy-read version. Six Ds and the engineering solutions aren't in the original five-year tree management strategy. They don't appear in any of the tree management strategies, except the one that they released and took to court. I know you've had various reports about the version control, and so I won't go into that. But if you look at Justice Gilbart and Justice Miles' judgement in the High Court, they considered that the document set out the criteria and the decision-making process, and it didn't. The first version, 2012, actually has a detailed and a set-out plan to feld 17,500 trees in the first one. Nothing about the six Ds and the engineering solutions. We think that one was done at kind of tender procurement stage, it was done right at the beginning of the letting of the contract. So, it's not surprising that it would have been changed quite quickly, that's the nature of those things. So, it makes the kind of November 2013 one probably the most important. In that one, there's a clear strategic goal to reduce future maintenance through species selection and appropriate management, what I was referring to earlier. Still no engineering solutions or six Ds, but it does set out the factors for how to decide whether a tree needs to be felled in that one. And these were the factors that were at play at the time they did the assessment and said which trees need to go. There are 10 factors, tree health and condition, species suitability, whether it obstructs the highway, damaging to surfaces, third-party damage, life expectancy, future maintenance options, landscape impact, I've never quite figured what that one out, engineering solutions presumably can may be applied, and heritage and habitat value. So, they're the 10 that were used when they identified the trees for felling, not dead, diseased, dying, damaging, and discriminatory. It's worth noting that the species suitability, life expectancy, and future management options, you can't fit them into any of the six Ds. They just don't fit. The council maintained its story that the version given it was an easy read, but the facts just, I mean, they don't, I don't know why they've maintained that, they still maintain that, but the facts just don't fit that. There's a whole section in it about the way that the council has to re-check every felling that the council, that the Amy thing, the council is going to go out and independently assess whether they agree with Amy's decision. If you look at the published sets of information on each of the trees, particularly where it then adds the ITP, but there's this kind of convoluted spreadsheet that sort of sets it all out. In there, there's a box that indicates whether the council has approved it or not, but we can't find any evidence of when, who, how, they went and independently assessed the tree. It may exist, but we've never seen it. You know, perhaps that's something that the inquiry can figure out, you know, did they ever go out and independently assess the trees, or did Amy provide photographs, as I think it says in one of the documents, and the council just have a look at those and say that they can feld it? We can also evidence that the council knew that the High Court had this, what is a false impression, that they were using the six Ds and the engineering solutions as a criteria. The council had four court cases with which at any time, it could have gone back and go, "Well, actually, you're right. I know you'd place weight on Justice Gilbart, but actually, it's not quite like that, and maybe Justice Gilbart was slightly misled by this erroneous document." But as part of the talks, and I know you want to ask me questions about that, and I'll come back to that, but the talks meant that we then held a series of tree investigations, and we then published a review of the tree investigations. It's called the Review of Tree Investigations in August 19...
2019.
2019, the date it came out. In that document, the council makes several statements. It was jointly authored by the three of us. So...
By the three of us, you mean the campaigners, Amy, and the council?
And Sheffield Tree Action Groups. So, in the report, there are several statements that, in my view, leave absolutely no doubt that this idea that felling is a last resort is a completely false assertion. I'll just read those out if I may. Amy explained that "When originally assessing trees for removal, factors such as tree age, condition, species, and future maintenance, brackets, as set out in the original and subsequent five-year tree management strategy, were considered along with the condition of the highway network." That unequivocally says, "We identified trees for felling to do with the tree, not the highway," in some cases. Whilst condition might fit into the six trees, tree age, species, future maintenance doesn't. Neither does changing the age profile or species mix fit in with this idea of it's a last resort. The other thing that was stated in that 1.3 is it says, "There was agreement that as the dispute over trees grew and the later introduction of the six Ds, as an attempt to simplify explanation of the public, that in some cases, the original decision for replacing a tree was obscured. When the proposals were published, it was often the case that the reason for replacement on the notice attached to the tree was for one of the six Ds, for example, damaging. This may not have fully reflected the original reason that the tree was identified for replacement." So, again, it's hard, you can't, there is no doubt that they were identifying trees for felling that were not connected with highway maintenance. Another paragraph from that, "Works done during the joint investigations involved similar techniques familiar to highway engineers. Of the 14 trees used as examples for the review, none required variation of the existing contract or works outside the scope of the contract." And again, that contradicts the assertion the council made to the High Court that felling was a last resort, where the retention would have been extra cost for the council. And it was a point they argued in relation to the ITP, in turning down the recommendations of the ITP, was the ITP keeps recommending things that will cost more for the council. It didn't. And we heard Andy Buck's evidence. It also confirmed, there's a paragraph in it where it confirms that the engineering solutions were not specified in the contract, and they came from public consultations, which is why some of them are erroneous anyway. Tree growth retardant, it was never going to be used or even allowed. So, when you look at those statements, and then you look at the judgements by Justice Miles relying very heavily on what had happened in the case heard by Justice Gilbart, you really can't weigh those, you really can't square those two things. You asked me the question as a, given what you know now. I really think there's someone else you need to ask that question to, and I would be delighted if it was possible for you to ask that question to Justice Miles. Given what you know now, what do you think? Granted, he may well have granted the injunction. I mean, Justice Miles did accept that partly the council's position was, the trees belong to the council, and they can cut them all down if they want to, as a basic principle. But I would be delighted if you were able to get some information as to what Justice Miles thinks about it now.
The next thing I wanted to ask you about was your experience of chairing the Sheffield Tree Action Groups, about how campaigners chose different courses of action, how they worked together, or in some cases separately, to pursue the campaign aims.
Yeah. Sheffield Tree Action Groups... Sheffield Tree Action Groups, you know, was a variety of different local groups that, that grew up at different stages in the process. And I think the steering group role really was to have a representative or a couple of representatives from local groups and then try to act as some sort of coordination and providing and sharing support. So if a group over there had done something that had worked well or come up with a, an initiative that raised public profile like the yellow ribbons, is to try and encourage the other local groups maybe to do the same. And, and that was very powerful, actually, in terms of just about picking what colour to put ribbons around the tree. And if we all use the same colour, it means more than if we all use different colours, that, that kind of thing. So there, there was kind of a lot of that mundane, let's just, you know, try and keep this, try and keep the, the, the campaign alive and, and gain publicity. So there was a lot, so the steering group really was, was in a way partly trying to be able to provide some form of coordination, but also to try and make sure that people understood what, what the campaign aims were, that you weren't getting local groups maybe saying very different things or taking very different actions that weren't really fitting that we're here to try and protect healthy trees, which was the key aim. Steering Group had some subgroups. It had subgroups such as Fund Branch, you know, trying to raise money because we had to do a lot of fundraising i- in order to, to defend people and, and pursue legal defences. An arts group starts, which was, which was absolutely terrific and, you know, really supported many people's outlet for, you know, the grief that they were going through, having maybe that earlier that day watched people fell a tree and it was, I think, really vital that groups like that were an important part of the campaign and about trying to look after each other through what was a very traumatic time for, for a lot of people. Steering Group really, Steering Group really couldn't, couldn't dictate or direct anything. You know, the kind of, the, the nature of the disparate groups of people that, that were campaigners meant that, you know, when I, when I was chairing, I think particularly for, for Chris Rust and Rebecca Hammond, before I got involved. Yeah, herding cats and, and you know, trying to keep the lid on things and firefighting was a, a lot of what they had to do, you know, which is very, which is very challenging. But to give you, to give you an example, back when Dave Dilna was chair, the time of the arrests on Chipping House Road, which was February seventeenth, which I didn't know, I didn't know at the time, but it turned out that the steering group were trying yet again to get some meaningful dialogue and talks going with the council. And it turned out that when, and I was fairly new to the campaigns. I don't really know what was going on, but when some of us got arrested on Chipping House Road, you know, steering group was a bit, oh God, we, we, we hope we're getting somewhere, you know, having talked to people afterwards, they said, we weren't getting anywhere. We were just desperate to try and talk. And it felt like our action ended up getting arrested on there, you know, gave the council opportunity to go, oh, we're not talking to you because you're still doing this, that or the other. So it's very difficult for steering group to kind of manage anything. Individual campaigners, campaigners mostly acted really in the way that they could. There was a lot of friction at times. You try to manage a public facing Facebook page with 10,000 people on it. And I think steering group and members of the admins of the Facebook page and through steering group were always very, very keen to try to make sure that we, people didn't focus their anger on individual people. So I mean, if, if on Facebook you posted anything that could be considered as a threat or an angry comment about an ARB, you know, it, it would be taken down. People would contact you and say that that is not what we're about and, you know, we're not having that. And over the years, a number of people were removed from having access to the Facebook page just because of that, because you don't want that comment. Because the slightest comment, the council's comms team, that'd be in the next press release, you know, so if somebody in a Facebook comments, wait till they get home, that would be a threat to life against an ARB, you know, that, that was kind of what was being, what was being said. And I've got a lot of experience in working with, in, in my career of working with interest groups, working with family groups, you know, working with volunteer groups, people. And I think overall, people in the campaign, you know, rubbed along pretty well, I think. The time and commitment given by people as local group reps, as people working in the background and the co-chairs that, that worked, I think has left a legacy. And I think that the relationships and community involvement that's been built up from that is something that, yeah, the city rightly should be very, very proud of. I think you asked me that as a two-part question, didn't you?
You covered a lot of ground there, but if there's more you want to say on it, feel free.
No, I think that's, in terms of the, the, the background to Sheffield Tree Action Groups, no, I think that's.
That's great. Thank you, thank you. So the next topic is your reaction and the reaction of other campaigners to the council seeking and obtaining injunctions in June twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it was, I mean, the, the, the lead up to that, there were, there were a bunch of us really regularly being able to get to trees before they'd cut much off it. So it was, again, it was very much a social media kind of messaging process where you'd find out that they were there to fell a particular tree. You'd try and get there or try and get someone there. Couple of occasions in, in some of the less well-supported parts of the city where, you know, you felt that people wanted the trees felling. We'd go and park in the morning and just wait in case the chipper would arrive, see if we could deter them because you could get some abuse off local residents if you were trying to fell the tree, which as I think Anne Anderson said was predominantly leaves in my gutters, bird poo on the car, you know, that. So there was a group and we were, we were very proactive in, in trying to do it and we were really, really slowing them down. I think, I can't remember the figures of it, but I think in the injunction court, it was, you know, just under 500 times they'd attempted to fell a tree and 300 and something, 60 times we, we prevented them. So we were having a pretty good success rate of being able to, to get this. But to be honest, we were just stuck in this, this bit of, we'll try and stop the tree coming, you know, and nothing else was going in. There was no resolution. It was, that's just what was going on. I think when they took, sought the injunctions and a whole raft of people got sent these, these letters, it signaled to us within the, within the campaign that no amount of talking was going to resolve this. It really felt like you could try and arrange another meeting with, with Julie Dorretl. It wasn't going to get you anywhere. The council were absolutely committed. This is what they're doing and they're going to have to use an injunction to, to get there. It was very frightening. I think the, the wording of the undertaking, the pre-court papers that people were sent were very clear to, to us all that you'd be liable to near unlimited costs. You know, I mean, these were things like, you know, it could be in the million. So you'd be thinking, well, actually I could lose my house over this. It was extremely frightening for, for people. And I think a lot of people signed those undertakings out of genuine and understandable fear. Myself and thirteen others or thirteen of us didn't sign at that earlier stage, although we gave an undertaking to the court on the day of the injunction hearing. I think, I mean, just, just to give an example, you got sent a, an evidence pack with photographs of you behind barriers. We know that you've been doing this. We're going to take you out to the injunction. I, I, I got mine. Three of the pictures were of somebody else entirely. You know, it wasn't even me, you know. Well, maybe that, you know, that the level of incompetence is staggering if you're going to do it. And you can't, well, maybe, maybe we'll keep pushing. So I, with a few others, pushed it up until the morning of the court. And then we said, I think Justice Miles refers to it in his junction, that, that we then said we signed the undertaking reluctantly because of the potential financial penalties. And the people who went forward was on the basis that they felt they had less financially to, to lose, which was very uncomfortable, I think, for, for a lot of us. I mean, we now know that, of course, the costs of protest fall on Amy. It's, it says that in the contract. The cost of delays as a result of protest action will fall on the contractor. I mean, that's what it says in the contract. So it's a little surprising or unclear, or I'm unclear as to why the council decided to pursue the injunction rather than say to Amy, you are supposed to do the work you're contracted to do, costful to do, take out an injunction. I'm sure there'll be a, a, a legal reason why maybe it was better for the council to do it. But anyway, it was the council that took the action. But then again, what, what is Streets Ahead? I mean, be delighted if someone could tell me what, what is Streets Ahead as the organisation. So once years, ages ago, early on, I complained about a, 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 a tree or a particular thing. And I sent my complaint into the council, as you do, you've got a right to complain to your council. And I got a reply from Streets Ahead. I sent it back and said, I'm complaining to the council. Yep, here's your reply from Streets Ahead. But Streets Ahead isn't the council, as far as I could work out. Streets Ahead is a nominal partnership between Amy and the council. So was my reply coming from an employee of Amy? Or was my reply coming from an employee of the council speaking for the council? So who is it that is Streets Ahead when it speaks? It's very, very difficult to, to get your head around. And there were a lot of false claims put in the press about the costs that would fall to the council. I mean, most of those were self-inflicted through the I T P. But when we were faced with that injunction, what was being said was if there was a million pound cost overrun on the council, you could be liable for the million pound cost overrun on the council. It wasn't just liable for legal fees. And it was very frightening to people. But the, the main thing is they went down the injunction was that's it. No more talk. We know where we stand. And that's the key thing that it signaled really.
Okay. And then the injunction was, injunction was granted and there were discussions among campaigners, which I'm kind of guessing you would have been involved in, about how to proceed and how the injunctions would affect campaigning and protest activity, if you like.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to start, I mean, you, you've heard about the Olive Grove action and the first thing that we kind of did was go, oh, we'll just do something else then and see if we can do that. And that was a lot of fun. That was a lot of fun stopping them cutting a tree down on the first day of the injunction by not breaking the injunction. I mean, it was, it was very powerful and it just kind of showed the creativity, creativity of the campaign. But yeah, we spent a lot of time trying to understand kind of what the injunction actually meant. And it, it does take a bit of figuring to get your head around and that's no criticism of Justice Miles. He knew exactly what he was doing when he wrote it. I'm sure every word was carefully chosen. But particularly this issue about persons unknown. So the, the first thing that everybody goes, it's persons unknown. This applies to everybody. And, you know, and yeah, they, they put up notices on the barriers after they first got the injunction and handed out letters to people on the street. One example where the chap that I think called himself a server was handing out letters from the legal department. I can't remember who in the legal department said, and the, the letter said, you are in breach of the injunction and we will seek committal on the twenty seventh of October. So I'm a member of public. I'm stood in Mears Brook in the park. So I'm certainly not in breach of the injunction because we know that it defines it. And I get handed a letter from Sheffield Council's legal department that tells me they're taking me to court on the twenty seventh of October. It's disgraceful, absolutely disgraceful. Because Justice Miles was, was very clear on what person's unknown. A person unknown was somebody who had the intent to go inside the safety zone or remain inside the safety zone. If you had no intent to do that, you could prevent them erecting a safety zone. I mean, simply put, that's what you could do. I couldn't because my undertaking, I, I was named. So if you were named or you'd signed an injunction, persons unknown doesn't apply to you, your name. So I definitely couldn't prevent setting up a safety zone. But trying to help people understand who'd just been given a letter saying, we're taking you to court on the twenty seventh of October, trying to help them understand that actually they could have deliberately prevented the council, the setting up of safety zone and could have parked their car under the tree. And all right, it says you can't. I said, you're not a person's unknown. Are you intending on going in the safety zone? No, you're not a person's unknown. Park your car where you like. You're not in breach of the injunction. But the council's wording, both of letters and notices, made no mention of that. I mean, it later on caused Justice Miles to say in court that the only version of the injunction I'm interested in is my version, when that was, when that was being discussed. So what we then got into was, was trying to look at what the tactics were. Okay. If we know that there are certain things that we can do, even us who are named, but also others can do, actually there's quite a lot that we can do within that. And that's where sort of geckoeing, the, the idea of geckoeing. Basic principle being that I'm not going to stop the council from setting up a safety zone. But if I'm there first and I'm leaning, standing on public property on the pavement and I'm leaning against the, the railings of the park, I'm quite happy that they put the safety zone in front of me. Now, they would argue there's not enough space for the safety zone. But Justice Miles asked them in the injunction court what size a safety zone had to be. And they refused to define the size of a safety zone. They've refused to define the size of a safety zone because that would have taken the safety zone into some people's gardens. Some places that the distance is metre and a half. So if they'd said we need six metres round every tree, they'd have instantly not been able to fell any tree that overhung a garden. So they didn't want to define the size of a safety zone they needed. So we just took advantage of that and said, well, that's fine. So lots of film of me and others standing there saying, I'll just stick it in front of me. And it never took me for breach of the injunction for any of those because I wasn't breaching the injunction. I was doing what I could within the terms of the injunction. And that was a lot of what we focused on about, you know, how, how we deal with, with that. Then really, they started to be able to get, get more trees down. We, we did pretty good with that. They, because we were defending trees in Mears Brook by standing in the park underneath the overhanging trees, they, they came and cut all the branches off at five o'clock in the morning. We got up to find the park full of branches and they'd literally stripped one side of the tree. So that when we stood there, they said, ah, that's perfectly safe. We'll just fell the tree anyway. So we couldn't use standing in the park to protect some of those trees. And we lost a couple of trees on the road because of that. I mean, essentially then, the, the, the kind of final tactic I goes is people, some people chose that they would take a risk and, and defy the injunction, but mask their identity. People who went over the, the barriers got known as bunnies. That, that was really quite spontaneous. I mean, it wasn't anything that we, we did as a campaign. I don't think any of us as campaigners would have asked another person to put themselves at risk like that. It was spontaneous. I remember the, who I think was the first person who did it. Of course, that went on social media and then, you know, next time there was a shout out that a tree was coming down, it'd be, you think, oh, I think that might be a different person. It might not be the same person. And it, and it kind of snowballed a bit. But that in itself wasn't, wasn't a tactic. But we certainly spoke with local groups trying to reassure what the legal position was, what you were and weren't in, in breach of. So I think that was, that was really a lot of our, a lot of our focus about trying to deal with the injunction that was granted.
Okay, thank you. Now you started to touch on the next topic I wanted to ask you about already actually, but the dispute escalated from late twenty seventeen into early twenty eighteen. And I wanted to give you a chance to say anything you want to tell me about, how you feel the sort of different approaches of the council, Amy, South Yorkshire Police, campaigners, protesters, kind of interacted with each other, if you like, during that period as the situation deteriorated.
Yeah, yeah. And so I try and break this down into each of the organisations, just so that it's not all jumbled up. So I've, I've, I've made a few notes and some bits that I'll, some bits that I'll read. I mean, I think from, from the council, as it progressed through seventeen, eighteen, essentially their position hardened. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty clear. There were no discussions with, with STAG. There were no discussions with STAG. You know, this, the, I guess, their mindset was, the court said twice, it's lawful, we're doing this, you're being undemocratic, you know, this is the democratic, it's lawful, we're going to do this. I mean, there's a, in the felling film, I think, there's a clip of Paul Billington, when we're trying to talk to him about, could he explain to us what's wrong with this tree? And he says, it's not about trees anymore. And you go, no, 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 it is, we're trying to ask you about these trees. No, it's not about trees anymore. So the kind of attitude really got quite brusque, you couldn't have any, you couldn't really have any conversation. I was gonna say, I thought the communications from the council were bad or poor, but actually, that doesn't describe them, it doesn't describe them properly. Because actually, the communications from the council sometimes were very professional, very clear. When I say they were bad or poor, it's because they weren't accurate. Actually, they were unbecoming, in my view. A lot of the communications and things that were put in the press were unbecoming of a local authority. And I just want to give a brief example of that. Council produced a number of myth-busting pages. I can't find the first one of them online anymore, but I found some of the versions. And I just want to give a couple of examples of that. So, and it put a myth and then it put a truth. So this is council communications. Myth 15, delays to the programme are costing Amy. Truth, delays to the programme caused by tree protester disruption are a cost to the council, not Amy. We know that's not the case. That's my local authority communicating with its population. Myth 14, most residents disagree with the proposals for street replacements on their streets. Truth, the survey which was sent to residents where tree replacement was needed, found that less than seven per cent disagreed with the tree replacement process, proposals. You've seen the figures for that. Less than seven per cent disagreed, less than seven per cent agreed. The figures, if you don't count the decimal places, they both come out at seven per cent. The majority either did not respond or were in favour. How was the majority in favour when both figures are seven per cent? Again, it's unbecoming. Other than that, we didn't see the council a lot. It was basically Amy, police and security guards and being under trees. There really wasn't much, except in the press with the council. I think with Amy, I think as it escalated, it's really interesting that at some point, it's got to be around late 2017, the ARBs who worked for Amy, now, most of these were arborists that had worked for the council and then were, I'm assuming, typically transferred over at the start of the contract. The ARBs who worked for Amy stopped coming to doing the fellings, it all became subcontractors. There had always been some subcontractors around, but we noticed that then it was all subcontractors and the ARBs. And I just have to give the, just have to give an example of kind of late in 2017 on Mearsbrook Park Road, before there were really successful attempts on Mearsbrook Park Road. I just was going to work, and I happened to see an Amy chipper van coming up the road. Pulled up next to me, and I was furiously texting away, saying, gonna need help, because I was the only one out there, I was just heading off to work. And they pulled up in front of me, and a chap in there said, hello, Paul. All right. And he said, hang on a minute, and he phoned, obviously got through to head office in Amy, I can't remember the guy he spoke to, but anyway, he said, yeah, we're here on Mearsbrook Park Road, there's quite a few protesters around, what I suggest we do is go and do that pruning job on wherever it was. How does that sound, Paul? I said, that's fine. I said, I won't put anything out and chase you around. If you're telling me you're going for a pruning job, I'm happy to leave it at that. And one of the guys in the back said, I did my apprenticeship looking after these trees, pruning these trees and managing these trees, and we're really quite proud of these trees. And that was the last I saw of the Amy crews. And I think that summed up for me, getting a real indication for people who cared about trees, loved trees, worked for the council, tree officers. They don't all want to just go and cut down trees, they love the trees they work with. And here were a group of people who now found themselves in a different organisation, doing work that they really were not satisfied with. That's my impression of that encounter. Amy got subcontractors in, Acorn were the main ones. To be honest, as it progressed, many of them kind of took the whole thing pretty personally. It was a battle between campaigners and ARBs and recount an occasion of literally running down the road while somebody in tree climbing boots, all the gear, is carrying a couple of barriers, trying to get to a fence before I do, which I have to say was kind of hilarious. But they kind of took it personally, I think. Then we got the, then we got greater levels of security, barrier crews, they turned up with harass fencing, and then we got the SIA security guys, and I'll talk about that a bit more in relation to something else. But it got a lot more aggressive, so there was a lot of shoving. So if I got to a wall first before they, I was likely to get shoved out the way with a, basically with a barrier and, you know, people who were six foot. And we all noticed that, yeah, it was getting, it was getting quite physically aggressive, which we'd never, we had never had before, and that's what we started to face. We know that from FOIs that in early 2018, Amy were discussing and must have put forward proposals for a compromise to the council, because we know from FOIs from, I think, the police liaison, shared with the police, that there's a line in it, I'll dig it out, but I think you've already had it, but there's a line in there where it says, hold off on offering the compromise of delayed fellings from Amy. So we kind of know that early 18, before we got into the, the second of the calling a halt to it, March, so before that, because I think that meeting was in February, Amy must have already been saying to the council, we can offer a different way.
So I'm going to ask you if you would re-forward me that email.
Yes.
Please.
Yes, I will do. Sorry. And the fact that Amy must have been proposing, yeah, we could do it differently, as early as February, if not before that in 2018, kind of reflected to some of the off-the-record discussions we've had with Darren Buck. We did used to get to talk to Darren Buck quite a bit, because in the end, we didn't see Paul Billington, but we saw Darren Buck more. And you always got the feeling that he'd be willing to bench, he'd be willing to find a way through. This was costing him an arm and a leg, you know, it just wasn't sustainable, and to be honest, he'd be able, he'd look to find an alternative, but it was never presented. They came back and started the felling in the March 2018. I think from a campaign perspective, any idea of trying to get changed by discussion, lobbying, evidence, expertise, it all evaporated as that. We ended up really entirely focused, tree at a time, sometimes a couple of trees at a time with crews. That was all we got into. There was no room for us to try and offer proposals or new ways forward. There was no open door, and to be honest, we were tired and busy trying to protect the trees. I think the biggest challenge when it comes to, say, for example, protecting trees or environmental issues, is if, if you can prove in the end that people got it wrong, you can't repair the damage in your lifetime, you can't put it back. So you realise that if you don't act and protect that tree now, it doesn't matter if you win the argument six months later. It doesn't matter if you then overturn the council's majority, oh, we did overturn the council's majority, it fell from an overall labour control, and the tree campaign had a significant impact on changing that. So relying on local democracy to stop people cutting down trees doesn't work, it can't work, because the timescales are too long. But local democracy did change, and I would argue it changed very much to do with the impetus that was gained by the tree campaign. Sorry, that was just a side point. And so, South Yorkshire Police, what, the interactions with South Yorkshire Police, I mean, they got, they got kind of dragged back in after the Chipping House arrest, and you heard about the Tulker and being arrested under that legislation, and then we didn't really see them. But we started to notice that some, at some elements where there was a protest happening, that the police would then arrive, and the police were being called by the felling crews, either the felling crews or the security staff. And we started to notice that there were a number of allegations like criminal damage, so someone's bent a barrier, so you phone, they phone the police, the police turn up. And what transpired was, is the police were getting 999 or 101 calls more frequently, and that started to make the police think, well, hang on, we're responding and being dragged off other things, we need to manage this. And I think that seemed to be one of the reasons why the police started to observe or just send a liaison in advance, this is before Quito or Quito, Quito. And that sort of began to change their tactic. Incidentally, despite the fact that Amy were doing constant video surveillance, and the police themselves then had some video surveillance later on, there were no cases that went to court for criminal damage. You know, you get an allegation, nothing ever happens to it, but the allegation brings the police in, the police get a bit annoyed that they're being dragged in, and it ups their ante, and I think that's what moved into then a different police approach. And I'd just like to say something, something about that change in tactics, because there was a change in tactics from what was happening around January, when the incident at Mearsbrook Park Road took place. And then there was a clear change in tactic when it came to March, when they came back after that pause, and you had Operation Quito in full flow with multiple officers. And I've been looking back at what kind of changed that interaction. So following the protests on Mearsbrook Park Road in January 18, there were a number of press articles, but also radio interview, a number of press articles put out quoting the police, and then there was a radio interview. And I think this is reflect, I think this is important to reflect on this. ACC Hartley was interviewed in March 18 on the Toby Foster Breakfast Show, and we produced a written-up narrative text of that. And ACC Hartley says, what we have to do here is, when you see fair, reasonable, lawful protest move into disorder, and see where harm starts occurring, so we're here to keep people safe. Toby Foster says, have you seen that? And David Hartley says, absolutely. David Hartley goes on to say, there is qualified offences against the SIA staff and against Amy staff. Bones have been broken, assaults have been taking place, been thoroughly investigated. He says, the reports around assaults against protesters have been reviewed. He makes a comment about the video that had gone around about a security staff punching a campaigner. I'm trying to work with partners to release the footage for that, because third-party comment is made when we investigate it, we have no victim coming forward, so we have no complaint. For obvious reasons, the victim was a masked person inside of breaking the injunction, so they didn't, chose to come forward. So we have a clear set of statements that says to the public and from the police's point of view, what they've seen and what they've experienced on Mearsbrook Park Road, which, you know, sounds like a riot. As a result of the Mearsbrook Park Road incident, I found myself back in court for breach of the injunction, because I had pushed the security barriers over. And that was heard in front of Justice Myles. Justice Myles, in his, in his judgement, refers to the fact that he's had video evidence from Savoka, I think the company, and he had video evidence from Campaign, he's looked at that video evidence. And I just want to pick out and contrast Justice Myles' account of watching that video and watching that demonstration, as against ACC Hartley's comments.
Can I just check that this is, you're talking here about your court appearance in June 2018?
Yeah, yeah.
Please go on.
But the incident is January 18. But it was June before I ended up, before it came to the injunction. But Justice Myles has seen video from both the security people and from campaigners, and I'll just highlight the various bits in his judgment. He said, I find the facts relating to the incident on 22nd of January 18 as follows. As already mentioned, Amy had engaged Savoka to provide security personnel to remove protesters from safety zones by force. This was a recent development, which had begun on the 15th of January. At the time, however, the use of force was, and perhaps still is, highly controversial. He refers to me arriving at Mearsbrook Park Road. By that time, two incidents had already occurred. Mr Brook was shown a film recorded by another protester of one of these incidents, in which a masked female protester had been removed by force. He was also told that security staff had beaten up a male protester. That was something of an exaggeration, although a film of this incident does show that a punch was thrown by one of the security staff. It is clear that this was a day on which feelings were running particularly high, with considerable tension, and with a view to part of, with a view on part of the protesters that security staff were using excessive force. He refers to the protesters, saying, another female who was outside the security zone held another protester's hand. The security staff tried to disengage the protester by rocking her to and fro. As they did so, the woman holding her began to chant, don't hurt her, don't hurt her. He says, there is no reason to suppose that the protester was being hurt at this stage. The chanting was calculated to and did inflame the situation. A man was shouting, not revenge, not revenge, which also had the effect of inflaming the situation. And he said, one further point, he says, the handling of the masked protester, he says, at one point, a security man pulled the protester as she was on the ground by the waistband of her trousers. In my judgement, that is in any rate inappropriate. So in that describing, this is just his description of what happened, rather than any judgement, he cites two issues that could be called assault by security staff against campaigners. And he criticises campaigners for shouting and inflaming the situation. Having looked at the video evidence, he makes no comment about the behaviour of campaigners or protesters being, what was it David Hartley said, disorder, causing harm, et cetera, makes no comment about that whatsoever. He describes my actions, and he says accordingly, he pushed the safety zone. As he did so, one of the security staff kicked out at his hand. The individual did not give evidence, but it's hard to think of any justification for this action here. And he said, you know, he accepts Mr Brook's evidence that we'd tried to engage the police. He said, clearly, none of the police officers present on the 22nd of January attempted to intervene. And he states in conclusion, under the circumstances which existed on the day, he did, he, meaning me, did no more than was reasonably necessary in the light of the belief that was held. So we have a High Court judge who's got access to video comparing what he saw in that compared to what David Hartley said. There were a number of arrests that were made following allegations by security staff against campaigners on Mearsbrook Park Road for various things for assault. There were no charges brought in court for those assaults. Yet, half the people there were wearing or carrying video cameras. Well, why is that? Because they didn't happen. I don't know if you, it probably is a side issue anyway, but the Savoka member of staff with the apparent broken arm that was referred to in ACC Hartley's, bones have been broken. We did our best to check, and we could find no record of a report to Health and Safety Executive. We tried querying Amy about it, but they wouldn't reply to us. If he had broken his arm, or had his arm broken at work, it would have been a reportable incident. It wasn't, apparently, and that I can only say is rumour, is it was reported a couple of days later when he got back from a weekend in Glasgow. Did he get his arm broken by a campaigner? Nobody ever went to court for it. In my view, South Yorkshire Police escalated the situation in their statements and in their briefings, and they did that to justify the move to a higher risk assessment and thereby more officers. We know that they, and Dr Alan Billings was saying, you have to identify what the We know that they, and Dr Alan Billings was saying, you have to identify what the risk is, you have to identify, it's only by identification of the risk. We know from, from what I was saying earlier is that Dr Alan Billings was being told that there were people from outside coming in. We know the councillors were being told that there were people being bussed in from fracking sites. So I think the police over escalated their risk assessment of the process and then ended up with thirty officers at a felling site. In order to make sure that everyone was clear why they were doing that, they picked out Mearsbrook Park Road and made it sound like a riot took place. It didn't. And then, of course, we then had the why, how it happened, we then had the arrest by South Yorkshire Police for people blowing a trumpet and, and noise, which will always, it's my favourite YouTube clip of all time, because in the background you can hear a chipper and a chainsaw going and there's a woman being arrested for making an irritating noise because a member of the public has complained. I mean, you could not get more farcical in doing that. That can only have been seen as an arrest to prevent protest. And that was a woman blowing a trumpet. And I think there's a, I don't know, there's a lesson for us all in, in policing protests and I think I would have hoped that Mr Loxley maybe would have focused a little bit more on thinking about how we police protests, because sadly, the only protest you can do is one that is ineffective. We were constantly being told we could stand to the side and protest and jeer and shout and wave placards all we liked while they cut all the trees down. Now, what we were being told is you can protest as long as it's ineffective. If you try and make it effective, then we'll have to do something about it. And I, I think that's a sad state of affairs, but I think that's what happened. And I think that's what happened in the way that South Yorkshire Police's actions were ramped up.
Thank you very much. So I want to move now on to the mediation process in twenty eighteen. Anything you'd like to tell me about how it was initiated and about the campaigners' key objectives in the talks?
Yeah, so I, I mean, various, various times, Staxian Group was always calling for, you know, talk or trying to engage with talks. I, I know Chris Russ and I had a number of, of different talks with, with Julie Dorr and, and you've heard bits around that. I mean, in, in fact, in, I think it was March eighteen, Cheveling Reaction Groups put out a press statement and said, we're holding a, we would like to hold joint talks with the council, the police and, and ourselves, publish the date and time. Council said it couldn't come, South Yorkshire Police came, nothing much came of it, but we, we were constantly trying to get round a table and, and get talks going. But I think the reality was, you know, Lewis Dagnall was a change in, change in the responsible councillor. I think Lewis Dagnall was brought in to, to seek a change, to seek a, a different way forward. But we, we now know that basically the Forestry Commission had already called a halt by then. So Lewis Dagnall was then brought in and, okay, do something about it. So I, I don't know how concerned council were about the, the Forestry Commission, but the police weren't coming back with those resources, the council weren't going to do it and there had to be a new way forward. So, but he, he, you know, he made a, a difference in then publicly coming out and saying, we, we're going to try and find a new way forward. We, it took a while, but you know, eventually we, we got to agree on a mediator and Bishop Pete being chair. I mean, it did take a while in trying to set that up and I think Lewis Dagnall gave in his testimony and he'd said to us at the time, he didn't really want mediation. Mediation wasn't what he thought was, was the way to approach it. And I can see now why that, that he, he was saying that was because essentially they wanted us to sign up to a new plan, not have mediation. But we agreed a mediator and that was fine. The idea of find a compromise was very difficult internally for us as a campaign group because your obvious response back is, you can't compromise over a tree. You go, well, yeah, no, we, we get that, you know, we don't mean you can fell half the healthy trees but keep the other, we don't mean that as a compromise. Compromise, just a word, we're going to have to figure it out when we get there and trust us, you know, we'll, we'll try and work well with it. But yeah, there was, there was a lot of apprehension in terms of the, in terms of the campaign. I think, I think for us in steering group, because I don't think we knew, we didn't know at the time that perhaps the chip, the chainsaws weren't coming back because the Forestry Commission had basically said stop. But I think we felt that if, as a precondition of sitting down and talking, you weren't cutting any trees down, which was what we managed to get quite early on, then take as long as your time about getting, you know, we'll take a break, we can do with a break. You know, if that's what we've got, then at least they're not cutting down trees and we can, we can, we can kind of breathe again. So we approached the, the mediation. We, we as Sheffield Steering Group did a, a little session together on what mediation is, you know, what are we going into this for, what are we trying to not only get out of it, but what's the process and what should we expect? We should expect this, so we read up and we did a discussion on what, what to expect from mediation. And our kind of key aims really were, were, you know, what's, what's happened, what's going on now and how do we deal with the, with the future? I think the, the past, we by that time had found the other versions, we'd been given the other versions of the five year tree management strategy, which was, you know, like a, like a bombshell for us. The engineering solutions, the I T P. So we, we wanted to be able to have an open and honest dialogue about these kinds of issues. We, we wanted a change in the, the current approach. So we see, we know you've got three hundred and nine trees that are listed. We know it says seventeen and a half thousand trees, so we've got a big chunk to go, so we, we need to have some discussion about how do we approach the, the current state of affairs. And we wanted a street tree strategy, something that would then deal with that in the future. So that, that was basically what we, how we approached it. And in the, in the lead up to those talks, Chris Russ and I met with John Mothersold. I can't, I must admit, I can't remember the dates of it. I think by that time we knew we were having mediation and I can't remember whether we instigated it, I think we probably did. But it was in the lead up to it. I, I think there'd been some discussion about things being delayed because of Pirda to do with re-announcements or can you announce this because, and that happened a number of times actually, we can't say any new council policy because we're in Pirda leading up to an election period and that kind of thing. But anyway, Chris and I met with John Mothersold and one of the things that we were saying to him as Chief Executive was this, these talks could be really, really difficult. They're going to be really, really challenging because now we've got access to the five year tree management strategy and we've got a bit more access to the stuff that was always held. We, we think we have very clear evidence that whether deliberately or accidentally the council misled the High Court and you didn't represent what was really happening. And, you know, that's individual officers that have done that, but that also it reflects on your legal team and basically the whole council. All I'd say wasn't the least bit interested. It was, well, you know, let's hope the talks can go well and you can move forward and, you know, at least, at least we're talking, that would be good and, you know, whatever solutions you come up with, we're not going to be able to find any more money, you know, you need to be aware that, you know, yeah, I know that. I'm certainly not aware, certainly Chris isn't. Nobody said, could you set that out for me? Could you, could you give me a brief? And we kind of told him a brief. So whether he was confident that there was nothing wrong, but I kind of would have thought of Chief Executive, he would have wanted to know before we actually started talking. Had something come out of this that he wasn't aware of or was he aware of it? I just don't know, I was just, I was just surprised because when you say that this could be embarrassing because we, you know, we might be saying that you've misled a court, I'd have thought it'd have been more interested. But, so, so the atmosphere was difficult, we, we were saying, this is, this is not going to be an easy process. So I think that's the, that's the kind of lead up and I think that probably leads into your next question.
Yeah, so my next question was to, to, thanks for that, that was helpful. My next question was, so tell me about how the talks progressed, how campaigners' council worked towards a solution? And, and also anything you want to tell me about the impact that continuing legal proceedings, which are going on at the same time as talk of mediation, had on those talks?
Yeah. I'll probably just deal with that often. It was, it was really difficult because, you know, I'd just been, been in court with committal proceedings, they would already announce that they were going for a renewal of the injunction and we were supposed to be going into talks to try and find a resolution. So all I can say is that we, we, as a steering group, we went round it and said, if we're talking, they're not cutting down trees, swallow it, there's nothing we can do about that, they're committed to going for the injunction, we're not going to change that. If we walk away from the talks, it doesn't benefit anybody and I, we just, in the end, we just had to swallow it and crack on really. There was, there was no alternative. The, the kind of process was two days followed by two days and we sent to the mediator as to be shared with the other party, we sent them a, a report outlining kind of key issues. And so we set out the stuff around the five year tree management strategy, the, the I T P and, and other elements, issues to do with the contract like curb straightness and continuous curbs and set all that out, about a twelve page document or something like that. Prepared a, a couple of kind of slideshows so we could kind of talk through some of the issues and, and show, show issues to them on the, on the screen. They didn't send anything via the mediator, as we'd all agreed with the mediator. They turned up with a plan and after the sort of like first half an hour of the mediator saying how it goes and stuff like that, they said, well, you know, could we just, could we just share this plan? It's literally around the table, handed out the plan and it said, we'll save seventy five trees now, we'll cut down a hundred next year, we'll cut down a hundred the year after and we'll finish off the rest of the third year after and here's the trees and, and stuff like that. I mean, A, we were taken aback so much so we said, right, we'd better have a cup of coffee and can we go to the room next door? Because this is not what we were expecting. And we, we, we came back and went, look, this, this isn't what we, if you expect us to have a couple of days talks and then go back to a group of campaigners and say, oh, you know, Mrs Smith, you know, you've been campaigning to stop them cutting down that, that oak tree outside your house. Well, sorry mate, it's one of the ones on the list that we're going to say they can cut down. There's, there's no way that, you know, we can kind of take this forward. And I have to say that their reaction is they were, they were genuinely annoyed. I mean, they were expecting that we'd be going, yeah, brilliant, all done and dusted. They were really annoyed that we hadn't simply gone, oh, brilliant. It took a bit getting over that over the, the, the sort of first day, we, various other bits of conversation. I think what we'd managed to kind of park by the end of that first day is, I'll tell you what then, you've got a plan, we'll take it in the break between the two sessions. Fine, we'll, we'll take that plan, we'll go and have a think about it. We had agreed to try and keep everything confidential and, and actually we, we took that seriously. We were very cautious about not putting anything out there and saying, well, they've done this, it's useless, you know, chuck it in the bin. But it was, it was difficult to keep that from campaigners because it was so ludicrous. They, they said in that, so we sort of parked that and said, we'll, we'll come back. They, they said at the beginning also that they were open to a discussion about an inquiry because we'd made that clear as one of the points of that. But what they wanted to do was use the time that we've got at the moment to focus on their plan or the present and perhaps we'll talk about the inquiry issue towards the end of the, the negotiations. Okay, we, we accepted that. So we took their list of phased felling, end of day two, we took their list of phased fellings and we thought, well, the only thing we can do is, is actually go out and get photographs and, and go out with people on the street and have a look at them. We got a retired highway engineer and a, an arborist to come out and have a quick whiz round. And so what we first did was go, well, why don't we just compare the one that they've said that they've saved with one of the ones that they've said must go next year and see if we can find the obvious, no, still can't find the obvious difference. That still doesn't make any sense. So we produced a slideshow, we went back to them at the beginning of the next sort of days with a slideshow going, you know, blah, 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 this is one and here's a tree that, it's absolutely nothing wrong with it. And you've said you'll try engineering solutions, but you think you'll have to fell it next year. There's absolutely nothing wrong with it. Consequently, it was in the end fixed by doing nothing. I mean, it was just taken off the list. So it, it was really difficult. I think then what we, I, I mean, they, they simply denied any of the issues around five year tree management strategy or the engineering, so we'd just understood it wrong, you know, that kind of thing. They had a contracts person there who was telling us, there's no way you can change the contract to get straight curbs. We were going, the contract said that there had to be straight and continuous curbs, so one curb line and it should be straight with no deviations and, I mean, even though they'd told the High Court that you could leave a curb stone out, they confirmed that the contract meant that you absolutely couldn't leave a curb stone out, it had to be. And they said, there's nothing we can do about it, we can't change that. Now, in the end, I guess really we just focused on the wording of a joint, of what became the joint statement. Because actually focusing on the wording of a joint statement, because you said it'd be a real shame if we don't end up making a press statement at the end of this together, rather than you said this, you said that and we're still poles apart. And actually, it was the process of trying to come up with a wording of what the heck can we say at the end of four days that helped us get some agreement because you, we, we both said that we want to try and say something together rather than separate press statements. And actually that helped us. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's, that's the lead up and the process, I think, which I think, you know, leads you on to how we progress.
Yes, so tell me, I mean, what you feel about the outcome of the talks, but also how they received by, how the outcome was, was sort of received by campaign groups and other interested parties?
Yeah. I mean, they, they told us at the end, no inquiry, not having an inquiry. I, I made a note of it because it's one of my notebooks, but Julie Dorr's words were, we're not having an inquiry because we're not having another P F I, so there's nothing to learn. This is never going to happen again. So basically, P F I is the P F I that's at fault. So, okay, we didn't think we were going to get one anyway, but fair enough. What we did get was that there were no trees would be fell, unless they were imminently dangerous or, you know, wind blown or, you know, eventualities that can happen. But there'd be no fellings without a joint inspect, without a joint inspection. And that's solutions that had not previously been considered would be considered. So again, back to the, or maybe we'll actually look at some engineering solutions. That was critical really because it said, yeah, you're not going to come and cut down a healthy tree unless we dug up the pavement, we've had a look at it, we photographed it and we've all had a chat with our own independent highways expert and we've all had a chat and gone, can you fix it? So that was what was really critical and you couldn't in a way determine what would happen about the rest of the trees until you started physically doing that. Because, and one of the surprises was that one of the published engineering solutions was take the tarmac off and have a look. Rarely ever happened. What we, what we got was a commitment to do that and it was, that was hugely significant and that we then published those findings. Getting there and getting that done was, was frankly torturous. All sorts of emails to various people, I think I even emailed Bishop Pete and said, you said we were going to do this and we're, you know, we're eight months in since those talks and we still haven't published anything. It was very, very, it was very difficult. We started the joint inspections pretty quickly, but we didn't get the review published until December nineteen, although it's dated August nineteen. It didn't actually get published till twenty third of December. And we got a commitment to the street tree strategy. I think the reaction back from the campaign, yeah, it was, it was very mixed, some of it was very negative, a lot of it was positive, a lot of it was few, you know, maybe we've got a chance. But part of the joint statement said things like temporary repairs and felling over longer periods and that kind of, it still is a concern now. But overall, I think people went, yeah, it, it, this is, this can actually now move us forward. But we knew that if the inspections didn't go well or it then meant that we couldn't, we could be back here again, but I think overall it was, it was, it was good. And then we started putting on social media the film and photographs of the joint inspections and the mood went through the roof. So we had, sorry.
Now, take a moment, Mr Brook, take a moment.
Caught me by surprise. Caught me by surprise.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We had, we were all dressed up in pink Dayglow tabards and we photographed the tree and you'd go to the first tree and they fixed it in two hours. Fixed it in two hours, put the curb back. It was, it was everything. Was everything we had said for five years.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Do you want to take another, have a breath, have a glass of water?
Give you a minute, it's, sorry.
No, it's fine, it's completely fine. Thank you very much, that was helpful.
Yeah, just to say, that review of the tree, it's a really important document.
Yes.
It really shows the ease with which they felled them, the fact that they used the published engineering solutions or other things that were just cut up as a sliver in the curb. It was really quick. One of the significant things out of the trees in the review is that one of the people, Benoit, who was done for breach of the injunction protecting a cherry tree on Avydale Park Rise where Ann Anderson was telling me about the other day. The tree that he defended, in the end, by standing in it, the tree that he defended, they fixed in just a couple of hours. It required no deviation, nothing, absolutely nothing, perfectly healthy cherry tree, still there, covered in Christmas lights and covered in blossom. He was done in breach of the injunction for defending that tree and you have to ask yourself, is that fair and is that justice? He broke the injunction, the injunction existed, that's how the courts treated, but is it fair and is it justice? Council took its new approach to cabinet meeting out, started to formalise it, that started to kind of, okay, there is a new approach and they took a report to cabinet meeting in July, publishing the trees that they definitely said that they would save, those trees that they still needed to fix. We told them that one of the trees had already blown down and one of them they didn't actually fix. The crew went to fix it and went, there's nothing wrong with it, packed up and went away. We told them that, they didn't change their report, why would they listen to us? So they published essentially a cabinet report with two pieces of nonsense in it. That was on Wurlau Dale, Wurlau Dale Road. So, yeah, could we have asked for any better out of the talks? No, we got as much as we could have hoped and as a result of changes in political nature, we now have an inquiry.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Now, I want to ask you a question about the impact of this. I don't want to add to your stress level, so, but I think, I want to give you a chance to say what you want to tell me about the impact the dispute has had on campaigners, people involved in all sides of the dispute.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm aware of the time and I'll be...
No, no, I'm not making that point, I just, I know it's had an impact on you, I think it's evident to everybody, I just don't want to add to...
It's, no, that's fine. It's funny because it, it's when it catches you by surprise that something, something just kind of that you hadn't, you'd forgotten about or you hadn't thought about for ages or as people have described, you know, you'll hear a chainsaw in the back and it's just almost like a Pavlovian dog response, you kind of go, this is odd. I think during the campaign, for a lot of us, it kind of put life on hold. It was like, nothing else, I mean, you know, a lot of people were retired people that acted in the campaign, maybe that was, but still, being there at five o'clock on a street corner in case they turn up, day after day after day with a rotor, you're life dominated by social media, you know, I know people who've then gone, yeah, I'm not doing social media anymore. So it had very significant impacts on a lot of people and I think it's very, very hard to judge that just those experiences, but I think of myself as a, you know, from a mental health perspective, a pretty robust and resilient person. But, yeah, there are times when it catches me out and I find myself reliving things. I think other than that, there were people who were arrested on, and either detained, either charged and then dropped for a variety of charges and that really, really difficult on people because most of that was pretty damn spurious. Pensioner that we know arrested for witness intimidation. And again, despite video evidence, massive video evidence, eventually it turns out there's no evidence of it. So the Savoka staff would say to the police, yeah, we've got it on video. And the police would arrest the person and then review the video and it wouldn't be on video. And you go, yeah, but you removed the protester. So people went through experiences like that, but they knew they'd done nothing wrong and that they were being arrested for assault. And that was really hard on those people. And the other impact, I think it changed the political scene in Sheffield and potentially was arguably a catalyst to the change in council decision-making process, process away from the strong leader model. If anything, it exposed the strong leader for what the risks with the strong leader model. So I think it's had those, it's had those impacts, but, yeah, that's...
Okay, thank you. Now, the last thing I wanted to ask you before I give you a chance to say anything else you want to say to me is about any remaining concerns you have, you know, some years have passed now, but I'm interested to understand anything you want to tell me about risks of a re-emergence of problems in the future and how any risks you see can best be mitigated.
Yeah. I think there's still so little trust. We're having the inquiry, but I've not heard anyone come back and say, we put an inaccurate document in front of a court and won a judicial review. If they said that, there'd be a bit more trust, there's so little trust. Sheffield Reaction Group still posts up Amy notifications, so Amy let Sheffield Reaction Group, or they publish that this tree's diseased, it's due to be felled. People from STAG still go and check that and if they have, if there's evidence that it is diseased, there's just one recently on the webpage, they try to help local people understand the need for that tree to come down and they try and share information. But increasingly, the suspicion becomes that it's very convenient when a big tree that was previously listed for damaging the pavement suddenly gets a disease that you can't see, but it's inside the tree, but take our word for it. And it's really, really difficult. I think STAG is in the invidious position of how does it, how does it deal with that? Does it say, yes, you can fell it? Does it say, so all it can say often is, they've told us it has a disease, this is the risks of those disease, most arborists would agree it needs felling. But it's difficult for us to do or for STAG to do that very independently and that's a real challenge. And it'll only take an incident or two where it turns out when they cut it down that the whole thing's as healthy as it was a year ago for that trust to be completely wiped out. I think, I think try and improve that, the council really must ensure that its oversight of Amy is better. You know, Mr. Billington told us in the talks that Amy were not in this, in the contract to make money, that making money wasn't Amy's motive. If the mindset of senior officers in the council is that this partnership is a partnership and somehow someone's not trying to make as much money out of it as they can, then they're fools. I hope that's moved on, I really see it, because we had a senior officer sincerely telling us that that corporation wasn't in it to make money. That's got to improve. We all tend to call for consultation, you know, and we argued that we wish the council was better in that regard, but there's a real concern about consultation when it comes to street trees or environmental issues. I mean, if you, if you consult by saying, do you want this tree removed or not, then you need to understand that some of the replies are yes, but the reason for the reply is because I can't quite get my car in my driveway and if the tree weren't there, I could actually park on it, I'd get my daughter's car on the verge outside the tree or the leaves in the gutter. So I think you have to be very, very careful when you're consulting, that you're not opening up a consultation that allows people to say, I don't like the tree, for reasons that you wouldn't normally accept as being reasonable. I'll say something in just, in a moment, just to, just to, oh, I'll say there, just, you know, that came up in Andy Buck's evidence statement, where he was saying, you know, he talked to quite a lot of people on the street when they were doing that and quite a lot of people said they wanted trees removed. I think what you have to realise is that those, other than the few occasions, and it's a small handful, where there was demonstrable damage to a wall or there was one, there was a tree, I think on the outskirts of Nether Edge where the tree was damaging a cellar and there were cracks in the wall. And I remember STAG Steering Group before I was on it negotiating with campaigners to go, let's not defend this tree. Clearly, this wall, this house wall is being damaged. It's very rare, if we defend this tree, we won't hear the last of it. You know, to be honest, if a tree really is with evidence damaging a house and that's the homeowner's property, it's difficult to defend that tree. You may have to accept that tree's got to go. What Andy Buck's talking about is people saying, leaves, light, car, parking, bird poo. The fundamental problem with the ITP is that's exactly what it did. It went out there and it said, do you agree with the council's plans to cut the tree down? Yeah, I don't like that tree out there. Yeah, I do. That's no, that is no way to manage a street tree stock. You decide what do you require as a level of urban forest and you work with it that way. Yes, consult, but be very careful about how you consult and that you get that right, which is why we're pleased that the strategy is there and, you know, is being used as an exemplar. So I think that gives us some positivity, but I know from feedback from people with STAG Steering Group, they find that process hard and it's hard to keep the council's motivation, keeping that going forward. There is little tree expertise left within the council. It's gone. So that worries us.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. So we've covered a lot of ground and I'm extremely grateful to you for, and you've clearly done a lot of preparation for this and you've provided us with a lot of valuable evidence, but before we close, is there anything else you'd like to tell me?
Just very, and I will keep it very, very brief, again, just going back to the ITP and how that was seen within the court's process. I think Andy Buck said that it was difficult for him to understand what the decision-making process was. He described the fact that they put in their recommendation, then they didn't hear anything back. You can see from the spreadsheets that were published about that, about that process, is that the ITP put in their recommendation, the council tell Amy what that recommendation is and then Amy tell the council whether they agree with it or not. So when you look at the outcomes of the ITP, although it was advertised that the ITP, the council agrees with the ITP 70% of the time, that was because most of the time when the ITP said you can't save the tree, the council agreed. But actually, if you look at the data, the council agreed with Amy 100% of the time. So if ITP said save a tree and Amy said, yeah, okay, the council said save the tree. If the ITP said save a tree and Amy said, no, we can't, the council said you can't. So whilst it agreed with its independent assessment 70% of the time, it agreed with its contractor 100% of the time. I cannot find one example where, in the words of Justice Mail, that Mr. Billington was able to insist that Amy retain a tree, not once, because Amy agreed. Western Road, Western Roads are very iconic. I'm not an expert on Western Road, but I just kind of thought, I don't think I've heard it, because it was so present for a number of us. I think it was Professor Othrham told you about the 450-year-old oak that they felled early on in Stockbridge. It always amazed me that the fact that they planned throughout this whole process to fell, as far as we know, one of the earliest World War One memorials in the world, it predates most stone structures. Just defied logic, absolutely defied logic and I think it shows just what a position they'd got themselves into. If they'd said it, trees must be felled for a highway maintenance, then they had to fell those trees because they damaged the curb. Thankfully, something else has happened. I don't know whether it's cost the council more money or whether Amy have just swallowed it, but it'd be good to know that. I'd like to just pay a tribute, which I'll try and do without getting emotional about it again, just to two people saved Bleedless Valley trees, both in their late 80s, who stood rain and snow defending trees. Gordon and Maureen, some of the most inspirational people that I've ever met. I think Maureen would be delighted if South Yorkshire Police had a file on her as a known activist, I really would. Finally to say, I think as a campaign, ultimately, we were better organised, we were way smarter, but beyond that, we were funnier than they were. We stood up to them and I'm so pleased we're at this point now. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much again. I think that brings us to the end of our session. So Charles, you can close there.